So I'm going to open the Select Board meeting on June 29, 2023, beginning with Executive Session at 6:30 PM with the Sherburne Select Board. And if the Assistant Town Administrator could read the Executive Session Agenda, please.
Good evening. Tonight, we were meeting with Special Counsel in Executive Session to obtain legal advice pursuant to Mass General Law 30A, Section 21A3, and Suffolk Construction versus D.CAM, 449 Mass. 444, parentheses, 2007, regarding the proposed North Sherburne Water District and put to sue into General Law Chapter 38, Section 21A and 7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant date requirements, specifically the Public Records Law, General Law Chapter 4, Section 7, parentheses, 26, to discuss written advice from Special Counsel. You'll need a second and a roll call vote. Chair.
Okay. Does anyone have any revisions to the agenda before we vote? Okay, hearing none, I do move that we need to enter Executive Session to discuss this one agenda topic, so I declare that it's necessary to do so. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll do a roll call vote. Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul? And I am I as well. Very good. Session, but we're now going to open the open session portion of the Sherburne Select Board on June 29, 2023, starting at 7:15 PM. And I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Board can vote to either amend or approve the agenda. I have had no request for public comments tonight. Items can be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. Item number one is the Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical School. It's an update on the school building project, and Karen McGuire, the superintendent, is here tonight. Item number two is the consideration of various Board and Committee appointments. Carol McGarry to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 15, 2024. Stephen Grimshaw to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 15, 2026. Item number three is the consideration of a new stabilizer for the Mount Zion Ranch, Fabio de Salvia, from 34 Great Rock Road. Item number four is an update on the North Sherburne Water Sewer District. Jerry Moss, Seth, and Marion Nutra will discuss that. Item number five is consideration of a special town meeting date that we have posted for October 17, 2023, at Lincoln Commons at the Dover Sherburne High School. Item number six is consideration of a donation from the Leaf Family Foundation to the Sherburne Fire Rescue. Item number seven is a consideration of acceptance of a grant from the Department of Conservation and Recreation to Sherburne Fire and Rescue. Item number eight is a request from the Planning Board to the Select Board asking for support to place a plaque in Gino Calucci's honor on a bench located at the Town Hall. Item number nine is the consent agenda, which is the Town Administrator payroll warrant, draft minutes of May 5th and May 25th, and a transfer of a common viculus license for rustic pizza. Item number 10 is the consideration of routine business, which is Select Board reports and the Town Administrator reports.
Okay, do I have any suggested revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as read?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you very much. And Karen, I apologize for being late. You're on Eastern Sherburne Town officially now. We're not very good at staying on time, but I apologize. And we're looking forward to hearing your presentation. I know John Douse is here also.
Yes, thank you. Yes, John Douse is here. And I also have with me this evening Trip Elmore, who is from Doran Whittier. Trip is our OPM on the project. I was hoping that we would have Dan Haynes, our school business administrator, with us, but he's stranded in Dallas. Well, actually, he was stranded in Dallas, and now he's driving home from, I think, Philadelphia, because his flights were so, so whatever. So he's on his way, but he's not, he's not going to be able to join us. So Trip will be here for him this evening. So I was hoping what I'd be able to do is go through our building project presentation. I know we met with you a few months ago and gave you an update as to where we were at that time. And we had said that we would come back in the spring once we had some rough order numbers and a final schematic design to be sent into the MSBA. And that's, and that's what I'd like to do with you this evening. So if I could have, could I share my screen?
You can definitely do that. The floor is yours, and you should be all set. Just double check. You should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Can you see it?
We can perfectly.
All right, perfect. Okay, so again, here we are, Tri-County. And thank you for having us this evening. I just will refresh for anyone that wasn't at the, the meeting a few months ago, and that really is not familiar with Tri-County. We are an 11-member vocational technical high school located in Franklin and service students all the way from Sherburne to Secconc. We have 1,000 students. Our school was built in 1973. And I'll point out that John Douse's mom was one of the founding members of the Tri-County Building Project back in 1973. And the, the way that the school tuition works is towns pay by students that they send to the school with a minimum of five students. The building itself is 50 years old, and we are in a situation, obviously, where we're considering what to do for the future of the district. Originally, when the school was built 50 years ago, it was funded by state and federal funds. Vocational schools at the time, that's the way that they, they were built. They were all roughly built around the same time about 50 years ago. And, and they're now in the situation where they're aging out because of their, their age and the way that they're used so frequently. We have a regional, we have a regional, a regional agreement that dictates how the new facility would be voted on by the communities, which I'll get into in, in a little while. And also, just for, for anyone that's, that's interested, we do have a building website that is allocated just only for this purpose, just for the building project. And you can find all of the information at tri-countybuilding.com. And that's, if you, if you can't find it easily just by putting that in the Google search, you could find it linked right to our school webpage. But that is everything on the page, including all the latest minutes from meetings and presentations and so forth. So we are still in the MSBA pipeline, and I'm sure you're familiar with how that works, doing projects yourself in Sherburne. The project pipeline goes through eight different steps, and we are right smack dab in the middle of the pipeline in step number four, which is called schematic design. We have completed the schematic design and budget and sent it into the MSBA yesterday. So we will now be moving into the next phase and, and be able to really finalize what the room-to-room and vocational program-to-vocational program designs will look like. So when we had to make a determination about whether we were doing a, a new building or whether we would remodel the existing structure that's up on the hill off of Route 140, the things that we looked at were the outside things, such as the areas around the school, the stormwater, the landscaping, of course, and the, our fields, the curbing and everything, the insides of the building, the building envelope, the hazardous material pieces of the school asbestos and all of, all of that, of course. The, the biggest thing for us were the code, the code issues that the school was running into. And then naturally, the mechanical systems, which had to do with code, the electrical systems, plumbing, fire, and then our network and communications systems. So all of those things taken into consideration. At that time, back when we met with you back in the fall, as you know, we had determined that the most reasonable option is, is, is we've tried to call it, is the new construction. This would give the school the opportunity to build a new building at roughly the same as it would have cost to do the major renovations and bring the existing structure to code. Anyone that's worked on a property that tries to refurbish that property, you know, that you run into all sorts of things that oftentimes bring the property over what it would have cost you to pay for a new one. And that's what we were running into here. The biggest issue that we have here, as I said, are the code issues. We, if we were to try to rebuild in our current facility, we'd have to bring the building up to code for electrical, for plumbing, for fire code. We don't have any fire systems, fire alarm, fire sprinkler systems in the school. All of the electrical and all of the plumbing is completely enclosed in concrete. So it would have taken quite an effort to be able to really rebuild this building from the inside out. So the most economical option was to build a new structure on the property, but behind the existing school facility. So again, the things that we took into consideration with the architectural components, they're well past their useful life. The building envelope, if you've seen Tri-County, I don't know how many of you have been on the campus, but it's that old stucco-type building that was built in the early 70s with the weaved-in-and-out envelope. It's not, it's not a, a system that is designed for energy efficiency. So we certainly have some issues with that. The hazardous materials, of course, like any school built at that time, we thought it was great at the time, but you know, naturally, you have to be able to work out asbestos and such things. And then the insides of the buildings, what we're finding is where we have a lot of broken-down systems with piping failures underneath the concrete and in the walls. That last slide that I showed you, you can see down at the bottom there. Oftentimes, we can come in and the collapsed ceiling tiles, because the pipes are breaking in the ceiling and so forth. So these are things that were reoccurring that we, we have to address. And then the outsides of the buildings, the pipes that are broken, the pipes that sledge-built and so forth. So we certainly knew what we were, what we were looking at. So once we voted to go with the new structure, then we had to determine what we would do with it, where we would put it. And it made the most sense to put it behind the building, where we have now a large solar field. So this picture here, if you look at that driveway that comes up kind of right here in the middle, that's the existing driveway as it is now. In this area where the cars are, is where the existing building is. So the plan would be to knock that building down. The new building would be behind it, and we would make parking here. And then the fields would go towards the, the front and sides of the building. One of the things that we'll do to try to offset some of the expenses, this, this area would have to blast out and truck off a lot of, a lot of the dirt and fill that's here. But rather than do that, we would spread it out among the property and then build the fields on top of it. So that would give us a base for the fields and would save the expense of having to, having to truck the, the fill off of the property. The building is-
Can I add one comment there? Do you mind me interrupting?
Sure, yeah.
We've had some problems in Sherburne with fill having some dangerous materials in it, particularly if you blasted ledge. So it can contaminate drinking water. So you know, I know the, I think your engineer or OPM is on here, but there, there's been some problems in Sherburne. We're looking at new regulations with regards to that. So blasting of ledge can disturb naturally occurring but toxic metals and substances. So may just be something to, to pose to your engineer.
Yeah, so that is, excuse me, that is something that we, we have spoken about in, in great length with them. And there are, excuse me, there are all of the testing, all of the boring and all of the, the pieces of it to see what's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, is what's, is what's going on. But again, the, I'm sorry, the plan. This is the plan, and we hope that it works out. And yeah, I, I know, I've read other areas where that's happened, and then others where it hasn't. So hopefully, we'll be able to-
But you can still keep doing the work, but you may not be able to reclaim as much as you want if it poses a risk. That's all.
Right.
Sorry to, sorry to slow you down.
Not at all. No, no. So the building itself is a rectangular-shaped new, new building with, with the concept of having a courtyard in the middle. All of our higher bay vocational programs that we would have to drive into in order to run those programs, like the carpentry shop, electrical, metal fab, automotive and so forth, they would be located on the bottom floor with the academic classrooms that they would work in conjunction with across the halls from them. Our cafeteria, of course, and the auditorium would be on, excuse me, on the bottom floor. And then on the second floor, which would be right above the, the same rectangular pattern as the one below, would, would be the lower bay shops, the medical, the medical and dental, graphics, communications and computers and so forth. Again, with that same concept of having the academic classrooms across the hall from them. So again, here we are with the MSBA pipeline. I apologize. I have bronchitis. I'm trying to make it through here. I'm not losing it. We have the MSBA pipeline over the next three years. These are the three modules that we'll be going through, where we're finishing up with the schematic design. We submitted the design to the MSBA that, what I just previously shown you. The MSBA will go through our proposal. And at their, excuse me, at their August 30th and Board of Directors meeting, they will vote to give us the stamp of approval on the proposal. Pending that happening, it can, hopefully, that, 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 that's what, you know, we're anticipating happening. And between now and then, any questions that they have, of course, we would work with them. But between now and then, after the approval and, at the August 30th meeting, from that point, we have 120 days to bring the project out to the communities for the community members to act on. What happens, so, so within that 120 days, the town clerks, we've met with the town clerks a couple of times, and the date of October 24th is what's risen as the date that the town clerks, that would be the best date to have the district-wide vote on the project. And then between now and then, we would get the information out to the residents. It's a resident vote. I get the district, hear the information out to the residents about the project, the cost for the project and the option for them to come to vote on October 24th. So the vote itself is under Massachusetts General Law Chapter 7016N, and that dictates how and when the vote takes place. If you were to imagine all 11 of our Tri-County communities as one town, the residents of those 11 communities come together at that same time in the polling locations in their towns to vote for or against the project. The votes are collected at the end, and I'll count it up. And however it goes, 50% plus one would be how, how, how it works, whether it's for or against the project. So it's not a situation where Sherburne votes one way and Franklin votes another way and Medfield votes a third way. It's not like that at all. It's the way all, all collectively, all 11 communities together come together to vote. How many polling locations? The town itself determines. Tri-County foots the bill for the, the polling that day. We pay to have the ballots printed, pay the people to, to man the, the machines, and then do the vote counting. I will also show you what we're, what we have submitted to the MSBA for, and I know this is why everybody came. This is the information that we had sent to the MSBA yesterday. The final total project cost is $285,992.692, with the MSBA grant right now estimated at $81,488. And so the potential local share at $204,504. Now, and so for Sherburne, if we look at the Sherburne total, we have 202 million over 30 years. And we've broken that down on these sheets. And again, this is just a guess at today, the rates we, we, you know how that, that works, that it, it's going to fluctuate, obviously, between now and the time that we really bond it. But if we look at the town of Sherburne, we'll get there.
Here we are.
Yeah, Secconc, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep. Yep. So Sherburne, we have, based on the, and again, this is, this is a conservative percentage, but we're, we're estimating it to be starting 2026, 2027 would be the first year that the bond would be out and then assessed to the towns. So per $100,000 of home value, an estimate of $3 per resident. And that's based on five students that Sherburne would have. And now if that goes up, then obviously, that would go up and, and so forth. So that's where we are with that. Now, I'll just bring you back, and I'll talk a little bit about this piece, the project cost. This is what, again, this is what was submitted to the MSBA. And we have the grant at 52.89% of reimbursed costs, reimbursable costs that obviously they max, because you know how the, they, they work with their grant program. Right now, we have legislation that is sitting with the Education Committee that is requesting that the MSBA increase the grant program for vocational schools to 75 to 90%, period, not fixed. Our position is that, that these schools cost significantly more to build, build than a comprehensive school and that we need to be able to help towns afford that, that we can't just have building projects all over the place. There are 28 regional vocational schools in the, in the Commonwealth, and they're, they're all in a situation where they need to be rebuilt. So the idea is that the state step in and allocate more money to those projects and just get them taken care of. That, that legislation has been sponsored by, by Roush and by, by, it was filed by Senator Feeney in North Attleboro on our behalf, and Representative Scanlon in North Attleboro as well. And, and Representative Garlic, who's, is in our area also, is on the Education Committee. She's the chair of the Education Committee. And we, we anticipated having a favorable read out of the committee back to the Senate for the budget going forward. So we, we hope to have good news on that. We were able to lobby for a little bit more money with them over the last year or so. I think we were looking at the reimbursement per, per square footage a lot less than what it is now. So, so we do have some hope that that will, that will go up. I, I will let Jeremy and Diane know where we are once it moves out of committee for them to continue to write letters to try to get support with that. But I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that piece out, that this is, this is a moving target here with this piece. All right. And with that, I'll take any questions. Or Trip, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm very impressed. Nice job.
Particularly with the bad boys. I think maybe if you stop sharing, we can see the audience better for questions, if that's all right. Unless you think you need to refer to it. And we already have a, one of our Select Board members, Marion Neutra, already has her hand raised.
I do. I mean, this sounds like a very necessary improvement. I'm sure that the town will be in favor of it. We sort of have contractor selection on the brain these days because a large project in, in town that ran way over budget and partly because the contractor proved to be basically incompetent. I don't want to compromise anything legal here, but we have had a big problem with, with the selection of contractor. And then I'm hearing on the, the news regarding the MBTA and the discussions, the MBTA has the same problem, finding contractors that will do the job at the price and do it well. So I'm just wondering what's being done in advance to find a contractor that will be appropriate and competent and won't run too far over budget? Because I can envision you coming back in, you know, 2023 saying, oops, we're way over budget. So could you tell us a little about that?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll just say one thing, and then Trip can fill, fill in. But we, we would have to come back out to the towns. And yeah, I don't want to put myself in that position either, believe me. And we've built, Trip will talk about the contingencies that we've, that we've built in here. Yeah.
So it's a great question. And in certain municipal and state forums, it's a very, very good and thoughtful concern. And some of the places in the state that, that are bound by different regulations, like the MBTA, like Massport and, and the airport, as well as the convention center, I think that's all wrapped into one, have very specific ways about doing their construction. And they also do self-managed projects. So they may have a group that is a bunch of employees for the last 30 years that are following typical processes that, that have worked for that agency for 30 years. I can't really speak to it. I don't want to be throwing anybody under the bus without knowledge. So I'm just going to say, that is that group. This group is a little different. And when I say this group, under the state MSBA process, the, the state under 2004 contracting upgraded legislation, they allowed for certain aspects of building that allowed for construction management at risk is one of the mains and methods that you can choose to pursue. You can also do lump sum bid. Lump sum bid is, is a more adversarial process, and you kind of get what you get for the bid day number. And it's take it or leave it. It's the low guy gets it. And you don't get a lot of opportunity to necessarily push into that number and into that manager. And what was, what was their strategy to get from A to B? We've chosen to go construction manager at risk, where we hire the builder as part of the team member. So they, they hire the project manager, which is me. We then hire the architect as a group. They then become part of the team. And then we, we went out and selected a construction manager at risk, Consigly Construction, who is well-known for school building projects. They have a, a team of people that have been on multiple projects similar to this one. They have a track record of coming in on or under budget. And I'm going to say, in this environment, we, in the last two years, the state has seen overages on numerous projects because of escalation being in the 8 to 10% per year. So I don't want to jinx us. But I, as Karen said, I will show you a little bit of contingency that we're carrying, hopefully, to protect ourselves for that next. So the first part of the answer is, we are under a process where we picked a contractor based on their skill level of their team, their track record as a team, their track record as a company, and their overall fit into the team so that we're not getting that, that bad apple, if you will. Sorry, John, to use the analogy. But you, I think you, you get my point. Is there any question on that aspect? I will then go to, if I can, do you mind me sharing my screen if I can?
Yeah, go, go ahead, Trip.
Okey dokey. Do you see my screen?
Not yet. Not yet.
Okay. Not yet. How about now?
It's coming. It's coming. There you go. But you're going to need to zoom in.
I will. What I thought I would do is, this is how we build our budget, and this is the state-prescribed budget.
Yeah, so this is why I didn't add it to my presentation. Because I said, nobody's going to be able to see this. So I pulled it up on the submission. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to give you perspective with this.
Yeah.
It has a lot to it. Okay? So now I am going to zoom in and get my cursor over.
Yep.
All right, I'm not hugely rehearsed on this.
That's okay. You're good.
We are starting at the top. What we have is the initial feasibility study, which, as of yesterday, the OPM contract has been fulfilled. The architect contract has been fulfilled. And then we had some other monies for, to the earlier question about environmental and rock and things like that. We had some money to do some preliminary investments. We had some money to do some preliminary investigation, not thorough investigation, but enough. Uh enough so that we hope that we don't get surprised. That million dollars has now been spent. Now we get into. Um and I'm gonna just talk general categories so that I haven't glanced over the budget. Ask me questions and interrupt as you go, as we go. There's an administrative function. Um that totals about seven point four million. There is the architectural and engineering. Which totals about twenty two million. We then have the construction side, which is where it all starts. Initially with pre-construction where they are part of the team to develop the costs as we get the architectural plans. Um solidified in getting ready for bidding. They are contributing along the way. We have three times that we go out and get estimates. We have three times that we value engineer the building to bring it back to the number. That we're showing that Karen shared with you earlier. And that. Uh as a matter of course with the state, every time we go out to estimate it, we have to bring it back. To the budget of. Uh construction budget of two hundred and thirty three million and change. So what also is in that two hundred and thirty three million and change. Are some contingencies. First, the the first contingency is roughly twelve million dollars. So so what I'll say is. This the construction trades as we see them today. Are roughly just shy of a hundred and seventy million dollars. Then we add on. To get to the two thirty three, we add on some contingencies and the cost of contracting. The first one is a is is a um updated. As we go. Additional scope that that nobody can see in this number today. That's tw- roughly twelve million dollars. The other major contingency. That we have that that is to offset escalation. Escalation to midpoint in construction as it's called is roughly eighteen point five million. So right there, you're somewhere in the neighborhood of what thirty thirty one million bucks. So this this is wrapped into that two thirty three. So right in that two thirty three, after we add all the insurances, the cost for their um fee. Um and and by the way. They also have wrapped in that cost a five million dollar um contingency that's on their side of the fence. That if they don't use it. That doesn't get spent and it's returned to the project, i.e. we just don't borrow. It's not like you get a refund. You just don't borrow that money. So as we're as as Karen was showing you numbers on an estimated borrow of two hundred million. It may be two hundred and four. It may be a hundred and ninety five. Typically, these projects, if we're well managed and we're being very fiscally responsible, all the projects that I've been on have come in under budget. I'm not trying to jinx anything, but you know, it's entirely possible and it's fairly common. So so we um we we have, if you include the GMP contingency over thirty five million. In that two hundred and thirty three number. On top of that. On the owner's side. So this is outside of that contract classification. We are carrying another bucket called construction contingency. This is to protect all the towns. From us coming back. And this is this is for, this is nine million bucks, nine million and change for construction. We also have, if we had surprises along the way. Where we had to do more, say, geo-environmental testing because we were in the rock. We found some heavy metals. We wanted to better understand that. We also have roughly uh one point nine million. Um of uh contingency for soft costs.
Has a question on that.
Please, go ahead.
So does that also have to do with quantity of ledge, not just the uh the leaching that Jeff referred to, but um. The actual like, you know, uh change orders for just changing subsurface conditions. Unexpected subsurface conditions.
We carried a couple of things in in our site prep number. Here.
Yep.
And I trust you can follow me as I'm scrolling through. This is up in the construction number. We carried some allowances for ledge. And and we had a good boring field from when they put the um. Uh photovoltaic panels on the site. They did a um. They did approximately ten borings and I think they did four test pits with a backhoe. Trying to find ledge. So the actual area where we're putting the building sits um. Kind of right on top of ledge, which is about fifteen feet down. There's a little outcropping at one end. Where we might be doing a little blasting, but we don't really anticipate a ton of blasting. To be honest, we've actually adjusted the height of the building slab. So that we're building, literally what we'd like to do is put the the foundations right on the bearing stone ledge. And and then go up from there.
Okay.
That's what I've been driving for because nothing building, nothing better to set your foundations on than ledge.
Cause didn't um wasn't that the Newton High School that did CM at risk like fifteen years ago and the ledge actually almost. Made like a nine-figure change order in that one. That's the one that kind of ruined CM at risk for about ten years. I think a lot of people didn't want to use it after that.
Well, I hate to say it, but uh that was my first school job as I was at Turner. Um so I was on on that project as the OPM. Yeah, there was there was unknown ledge. Um and. And the problem is is the building footprint was so large. Um that the outcropping of ledge. Um literally missed the borings. I think there were twenty four borings done. Um but they the elongated nature of the building um. You you just couldn't test every little nodule and and what have you. Um the other part of that project that that was probably more devastating is that the site of that building. Um overlapped the old building, so they. They're sort of did the same thing um to some degree as we're considering here is that they left the. Um building as it was operational and they built in another location. Then they knocked the building down and pushed it into the hole. And into that hole went a lot of hazardous materials. And so as we were excavating for putting site drainage in and foundations and things like that, we found pockets. Of urban debris that were brick. Um but all the brick was laced with asbestos and PCBs from the early nineteen hundreds. And so um it wasn't documented at the time. And again, the boring field never um. Really showed the the amount of um material that was in there. And yeah.
Yeah, we probably a good example, but we probably don't need to go too much further into into Newton. I don't think.
I just want to ask one quick thing, cause there was a question why I originally raised my hand. So in this case, the the existing school is staying operational throughout the full time and to other schools fully um. You know, uh ready for beneficial use.
There are multiple reasons that that um that was the most desired. The obvious being is is you don't have to pay for unnecessary swing space. Which is very difficult in a uh vocational space because modules don't really serve well as a uh. Uh shop, for example, but then um secondly, it really disrupts the student's education as when they're being hopscotched around. And the noise and and disruption is really impactful on the educational process. So the answer is yes, that. When when the numbers came out, they were very similar. Um or the same, to be honest, on the total project cost. It was pretty much determined that those factors outweighed anything.
Okay, thank you.
So you're all set, Eric? John, are you willing? I was gonna let them finish the presentation, but did you want to make a point before they do?
Um, yeah, I just want to add, you know, we. We've had a very good team to. Working on this project. I think Trip kind of. Showed you how much research we've done to get to this point on so unlike some of the other projects. The other thing is, if my understanding is we go to the state. The number we give the state is the number that we have to to uh live with. And. So we're very cautious of that. Um I think our. Team has done a very good job of looking at everything, making sure we have everything to uh. Cover any unexpected costs. One of the nice things being in a new school, you don't have that many. Surprises, you know, your biggest surprise is going to be what's under the ground than anything else. And the the other thing I know. For some people, uh we have a solar field in the back of the school where this is going. Uh we're working with a company that actually owns those. We buy the power from the company that. Puts that in at a reduced rate to the vocational school. But the other thing we're working on is working on a lead certification with this building. And I believe it's gonna be a a solar certification if everything goes right.
Yes, that's right.
So would the solar be on the roof end of the new building? Is that the concept?
Go ahead.
Um I believe we're kind of hoping maybe that we can do something over the parking lot areas.
Oh, that's cool too. Good idea. So all right, I'm sorry Trip, we interrupted your flow there, but I just want to make sure everybody was. You're all set, John?
Yeah, I am.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah, I I basically was concluding with, you know, that we have a significant amount of contingency to try to protect us along the way. And um and that we go through an exercise step by step. All the way up to bid date to keep proving that to ourselves and for the communities viewing, because it's all going to be public information on the website. That we have brought the project in step by step um within budget along the way.
Yeah, no, it looked good and I sort of ballparked it around twenty percent. All the different contingency components seemed like they added up to close to like forty five, fifty million. So your neighborhood's twenty percent.
Yes, you're.
That seemed pretty good. And the bad news is I used to work for Turner in earlier life, but we'll talk about that.
I run into people.
Way before you did, way before you did. I I I worked on the Kennedy Library. I assisted project manager for the Kennedy Library, my grand.
So let's. Not notable projects there.
Yeah, yeah, so. So um uh now I don't know, will you finish, Trip?
And I am unless people have other questions, I'm happy to.
We can see that. I didn't know if you had any other content, Karen, or should we just say there's other questions?
No, just if you have any other questions. And I also want to thank John. John's on our, not just on our school committee, but he's on ours such as a um. Vice Chair of our building committee and he's been e- every step of the way involved in this project, all the way from the very beginning of it. So. Yeah, thank you for letting him with his expertise contribute. Yeah.
We're both lucky to have him. I agree. Anybody uh questions? I don't see any other questions. It's right before the fourth, so we have a lighter attendance than usual. I'm very glad that you could come present to us. I hope your voice gets better before the fourth and. It looks like a terrific project. I think it'll be great for the students.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Much.
Right, and Jeremy and Diane, thank you for having us.
Welcome. Please keep us up to date on what we can do to support the legislation, the spending.
Thanks. Yeah, we will. I I'll reach out to Diane with all all of that. Yeah, thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah, bye bye, bye, everyone.
All right, we'll go on to agenda item number two, which is uh appointments to the Conservation Commission. Um we've already read them. Uh I don't know that we need, I I see um Courtney is here. I don't know if you want to add anything or should we just vote on these, Courtney?
Just just vote.
All right. So I have a motion uh with regards to two appointments. Uh one is a one-year appointment and one is a. What is that, a three-year appointment? Um for the Conservation Commission for Carol McGary and Steve Scrimshaw. So do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Uh I'm gonna abstain because my wife is on the Conservation Commission.
Yep, Marion.
I.
Paul.
I.
And I might as well. So it's uh four to zero to one, or however it's recorded, Diane.
Yep.
Next, we're gonna go to to the stable license for the Mount Zion Ranch. I think we've all familiar with that. This is a new owner, but they've had a. License before. Does anyone have any comment or discussion of this or should we vote on this one also?
Will approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Marion.
I.
Paul.
I.
And I might as well. And now um we're gonna move to an open session, just quick, quick discussion of the Sherburne Water and Sewer District. Um with Marion and Jeremy leading that portion of the discussion.
All right, Jeff, can I jump in a second?
Yeah, go ahead.
Obviously, I don't want you to kick me in the waiting room on this one. Just real quick, number five on the on the uh. On the town meeting date, is there anything other than this on the town meeting right now?
Yeah, right now, uh they there's a couple items the planning board is considering. The there they wouldn't have a town meeting. For that, those alone, but if there is a town meeting, they have a couple items, uh not major ones, but. Beneficial ones that they would take advantage of it if there were.
Do you think it'll be in the discussion for number five?
Um, no, I don't.
So um just uh kick me off for number four and number five. Put me in the waiting room, please.
All right, I'll text you.
All right, thanks.
Ciao. So um you want to lead off, uh Jeremy or Marion?
Yeah, I'll just introduce this. Um just a relatively brief summary and this is an update for the board. Um this, the North Sherburne Water and Sewer District, it was presented to the board, you'll recall back in May. Uh in the agenda packet is the presentation that was provided to the board um at that that meeting. Um you know, we presented that there uh there there's a proposal for special legislation to create. The North Sherburne Water and Sewer District. That special legislation would set the service area. Uh would set up how the district is administrated, its management, have provisions for changing the service area. Um the Water and Sewer Service uh itself would be provided from the city of Framingham under an intermittent agreement. Um and since the board's last meeting, uh the proposed district has been presented um by Marion. Um and and myself to various boards and committees for for awareness. Um and also special counsel, uh Tom Mellon is a special counsel. The attorney helping would draft the special legislation has updated the legislation um that was previously presented to you. To combine it into one document. So there's one um. One district would be created for both water and sewer. However, they would have independent service areas. Uh so that legislation has been updated. Um and actually, you know, leading into your next item. Uh to proceed with this, to set up the special legislation, um the Board of Select would need town meeting approval. To authorize the select board to petition the state uh general court uh for the special legislation. So. I'm gonna quickly.
I I have a que- can I ask a question? I already have a question and I'm not even supposed to ask questions yet, but. It just occurred to me because of the prior presentation. We would also need to have an election then to approve. To approve it, wouldn't we? A town election of the two thirds vote from town meeting or no?
No.
No. Okay. All right, uh any other comments, Marion? You want to elaborate?
I'd only add that uh this uh legislation has been worked on for quite a bit. It's been. Presented. Multiple times, as Jeremy said, and uh revisions have been made and uh so. It's quite far along in its development, but by now, uh. We still have quite a bit of time before town meeting. And even though uh it's quite detailed now. Uh it's still open for discussion, so we'll be presenting it over and over again between now and town meeting. And uh people will have a lot of options to see it, discuss it. And uh get and give input. That's all I wanted to say.
I think that's important to note too, too, and I I think uh. We should also mention our Tom Mullin, the attorney we pick has has uh worked in this specific field for a long time, so he's got experience and. How to implement this in communities like Sherburne. So he's been very valuable and we're. Getting the benefits of his knowledge from other towns. So um. I don't think there's anything to vote on on that on that item five.
Well, do you think we should vote on uh committing to a special town meeting on October seventeenth? Do we need to do that?
Are we ready to commit, you think? I don't know. I we certainly have the intent to do it. Do you think we're far enough along that we want to? Take a vote. What do you think? Uh Paul, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, the advantage of doing it early is to open it up so the planning board can. Know that there's a town meeting and prepare for it. Others. Other people who have articles can bring it forward, but if if you want to have a more limited town meeting, then you wait. To a lot closer. That'll produce fewer articles. Depends on what you want, policy.
I know, I know, I know. I'm not actually worried. I know, I know, I know. I'm not actually worried about having too many articles. I just don't want to sort of, you know, promise something that it is for whatever reason. We don't know. Some, but something falls through. I don't see any reason why we can't change our minds. So I think we could vote tonight to, uh, do you want to make the motion, Marion, to have a town meeting on, uh, October seventeenth? That link was common.
I, 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 um, move that we, and we plan for a town meeting on October seventeenth, tentatively, uh, and allow Jackie to go ahead and making, um, sorry. Allow Jackie to go ahead and make plans to, uh, to hold the town meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, so Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So it's four to zero. Great. That sounds good. So I'm gonna, uh, tell Eric to come back and, um, I don't know, is, uh, they usually do training on Tuesday nights, so I don't see Zach, or Thursday night Zach here. So Jeremy, are you gonna do item six, the donation from the Lee family?
Yes, yes, I am. Yes, I apologize. Chief Ward, uh, couldn't be here tonight. So he asked that I present this, uh, in the next item as well. The Lee Family Foundation has, uh, provided, uh, a donation, a generous donation of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. They have to, to the fire department. They have not indicated for any specific purchase, purchase. Um, but once, if accepted by the board, um, um, the, the chief would write a thank you letter and, um, and, and an appreciation for their generous donation. And so we're asking that the board accept this, this donation from the Lee Family Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion? I'll take that nod as an eye, Paul?
Aye.
I, and I might as well, five to zero. Excellent. And now we have a grant from, uh, Conservation, uh, uh, and Recreation to Fire and Rescue.
Yes, the Department of Conservation and Recreation has provided a grant of two thousand five hundred dollars to the fire department for the purchase of forest-free fire hose. Uh, we've asked that the select board, uh, accept this donation.
So moved.
Or grant, I'm sorry.
Second.
Eric?
First question, is this the one that puts us over a million? I mean, we talked about that a couple of meetings ago.
I don't believe so, Eric.
Okay.
A million for what, uh, Zach is, uh?
Pretty close. We're getting close.
Yeah, that's like every, every.
We just did his contract, though. He's not on commission. Don't worry, you're okay. Uh, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Excellent. Thank you, Jeremy.
I'll make sure the chief ward's here when we go over a million, when, when he goes over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You need the confetti fall down like Wheel of Fortune or whatever.
No, I think it's more appropriate a fire bell, like for the trial. We gotta ring a bell. I think that's what you have to do. It's like cancer patients, when they finish their treatment in the hospital, they ring a bell. It's a big deal. Um, so then we have actually, um, this, I'm not sure if anyone's coming from the planning board. I don't know.
Addie May is here.
Oh, there she is. Yep. Addie, you gonna talk about the Gino, um, plaque?
All right, yeah.
That's okay.
I'm playing this from my phone and every once in a while it's reminding me of options, but, um, the gist of it is, is Gino Carlucci, our Sherburne's Town Planner, has, um, retired this summer. And he has been Sherburne's longest-serving and only town planner of, in the history of the town of Sherburne. He started in nineteen ninety-five. Um, so he served Sherburne for twenty-eight years. And for many of you, you've worked with him throughout the years. And, um, I think there were, as he's entered retirement stage, we've learned more about him that we didn't know. And I guess not to be surprised, we've all been through the years, very grateful to the guidance. He's kind of a quiet, um, doesn't toot his own horn, but he did get his undergraduate from Georgetown University. Then he got his master's in urban and regional planning from the University of New Orleans, which then led him to work for the Mayor's Office of New Orleans for multiple years. And he really focused on environmental way back when, on those, uh, environmental concerns and energy consumption in municipal buildings and, um, kind of that led him then, working in Sherburne, he was a Massachusetts native, but then he brought his New Orleans experience with him. And, um, through the years, he's really been a great advocate for the green communities and all of the things that we hold dear in Sherburne. So kind of as we neared kind of the end of his career with the town of Sherburne and looking back, many, um, current past planning board members, as well as just community members have expressed a desire to have some sort of, um, kind of honoring of Gino. And with the new town hall benches that were uh, purchased as part of the revamping of, um, the kind of town hall campus and bringing the planning of the town hall campus back together. It has been requested, could we do a memorial plaque on one of the dedicated town hall benches in Gino's honor, uh, recognizing his many years of service as a town planner for the town of Sherburne? So.
Didn't they build a spot behind town hall for one of them? They built a pad or a spot right behind town hall, didn't they? For one of the benches, I think.
Yes, so the, I know that the, um, Town Campus Beautification Committee, there's a, 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 um, patio area and benches planned for that area. Um, I can't remember. I know one of the benches is that we have, it doesn't have a back, but um, I'm sure either, you know, where exactly that plaque will go, whether it's on that bench or another bench on town campus is still to be determined as far as which one is the most appropriate. Um, there is one outside that has a back that matches the one that is that like we'd want to be matching to the town hall, I mean, the town library benches, and we'd want to have it be similar. So um, there is one right to enter the town, town hall campus that seems to be appropriate.
Good. I don't think we need any, any discussion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I have a comment. Um.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Marion. No, obviously had to man. I got Paul already moved, so I wanted to jump in before he went through the vote.
Go ahead, Marion.
No problem. Uh, a quick question, Addie May. Uh, do you need, does the planning board need money for this? I mean, should we approve some budget for the plaque?
Um, probably, yeah. I mean, because we do want to ensure that it matches the style of other plaques on, uh, town campus, um, and the benches that we have, we have matched the library benches and the, there is a need for some funds for a plaque. I'm sure people would also assist, but we did learn from the, uh, the quote that we got from the bench company for just the plaque um, to match the ones that are at the library campus is around eight hundred. So, um, it seemed high, but I guess they're meant to last a long time.
Those benches are, are, I don't think cast aluminum. They are heavier than sand. They're unbelievable. Sean, Sean's probably still on here. They're incredibly well-built.
So, so, so let's assume that, uh, the mine will be found and we don't have to vote on that. I mean, I think.
I think right now, we can always do a reserve on transfer if we had to.
Okay.
So my only question was, um, and I love the idea, obviously. I was on the board, a planning board for eight years.
Yep.
You know, such an asset. Um, did you want to include like something else also, which was like, he was directly involved with, like, I was thinking, could you, I don't know if you dedicated, but some, I'll put something about him, like on the EV charging stations, because he drove that concept and drove it right from the beginning. That was kind of one of his babies. If there's anything else else in addition to a bench, is there something I was thinking when I was reading the background material yesterday?
Yeah, I mean, this whole town center campus was really part of it too. And, and so is the roundabout that we're thinking about there at the intersection. So
that's true.
It's all, they're, they're pretty, be easier to put a plaque at something he didn't get involved in, because they wouldn't have as many places to choose from.
Yes, all right.
So, so, but I think you're right. You know, this could be a, 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 an initial spot for the bench.
He's definitely left, left his mark in the town, no question about it.
Right. Well, we definitely approve this initial spot and we'll see what happens in the future.
Yeah, a, a cool spot, um, is, uh, Sean said he'll, Sean, we can approve the plaque. Sean will, uh, fit it into his budget, he said.
Okay.
Um, you know, eventually their town center campus plan includes some kind of a gazebo or some kind of, uh, small building on the classic property. So that would even be a cool location for a plaque too. All right. So I don't think we have to pick the location tonight. Um, thank you, Sean. For, uh.
Do you want to vote to support that or anything?
Yeah.
We, shall we vote? All right.
I second.
All right. So, uh, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I might as well. We voted, Sean. Thank you. Okay, that's excellent. So we were actually really humming along here. We had a long executive session, but we're already on the consent agenda. Do I have any adjustments to consent agenda or a motion with respect to?
I have comments. I have comments on the consent agenda.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, on the minutes of May fourth.
Yep.
Under, uh, proposed North Water Sherburne District in the coming, I want to comment that I left the meeting at that point. No comment to that. And I returned to meeting for the Elder Housing Committee.
Yep.
And just to make sure, so I've been QC'd all these, I want to make sure that that's in like all the meeting minutes relative to that, including today. In the executive session, I stepped away from the meeting and in the open session relative to that, I stepped away from the meetings. I want to make sure the minutes capture that and pass ones that I may have missed.
Yep.
Good point.
And the other thing on here is, um, does it talk about future meetings? I know, um.
Usually that's in there. I was wondering that too, because I think our next meeting is mid-July.
So I really like the one meeting June.
Well, we have to do, we have to do year-end transfers, I think, at the, uh, one meeting in July, though.
Yeah, before July fifteenth.
Yeah, you have a meeting scheduled for July thirteenth.
Yeah.
It's just maybe you can see how it is then. It just seems like we, you know, we have a pretty light agenda right now. It didn't seem to actually make a difference having this, uh, you know, this one, um, this one meeting. I know Framingham City Council and they, they're really busy stuff. They're doing one meeting, I think, July and August each, something like that. So.
Yeah.
Just, uh, something to think about. Maybe we'll assess it on, on, uh, July thirteenth.
We don't want you running out and spending money on Red Sox tickets, so we'll keep you, we'll keep you locked in.
And due, and due to other reasons, not do whatever, I will not be able to attend July thirteenth, just so you know, so.
Okay, but we do need to do that one, uh, for the year-end transfers.
Yep.
I think, uh, advisor is meeting the dance here. I think they're meeting a few days before. All right.
Advisor is meeting on the twelfth, the night before.
Twelfth, yeah, good. Thanks, Dan. So, um, we, we have a, a, a motion on the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
With, with, has, with my edits.
With the edits, Diane, you, you can go back and check it when you get a chance. Yep, thank you.
I have them.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So now we're down to routine business. I have one select board report. We did get a letter this week from a group of residents on Cooley Street concerned about traffic and congestion on Cooley Street. So, um, it's being referred. I, I mixed the committees up. I guess we sort of, uh, need to sunset the, um, Traffic Safety Committee, which hasn't really been meeting. And we really have a Public Safety Committee that incorporates all public safety issues, including traffic. So really the committee now, we probably need at some point to, uh, to retire the traffic safety. Public Safety Committee will look into the letter in addition to the Police Department and DVW Department. But also when I spoke to, um, Planning Board, um, Chris Owen this morning, that there, he's got a few ideas also, the planning board does too. So anyway, I just want to let you know that we see, I forget the number, maybe a dozen people on Cooley Street were signatories to this letter and they had done, gathered some data. They had some specific data on issue, you know, issues that they didn't encounter on Cooley Street. I think it's something that we need to be aware of, because we're, you know, obviously considering projects on Cooley Street too. So we have to look at the, the overall design of the street and, um, some new functions and, um, new circumstances, just like we saw when, um, Sean added that left turn lane on the Lake Street. That's really eased a lot of congestion there too. I think people are going to do over from Cooley. So, you know, little things, uh, can make a big difference too. Marion?
Uh, I think that that letter deserves a response, even if it's just.
I re- I responded already, but, yeah, I, I responded the next morning. And I, I specifically told the, the, the woman that there was one person that sent it to me and I told them that I would refer it to the police chief and the, um, I said traffic safety, but it, it's really the public safety and that I would mention it at tonight's, uh, select board reports.
Were there particular like days of the week or times of day where they're saying?
They have a, a whole spreadsheet. I didn't go through the whole spreadsheet, but yes, I, I, would you, would you like for me to share the letter with the whole select board? Or Jeremy, maybe you, Jeremy, could you do that? Or Diane, would you mind just?
I don't have, I don't have it.
I forwarded it to both of you.
Send it on to the full board.
All right, thank you. Are there any other select board reports? Okay, hearing none, uh, uh, town administrator reports. Jeremy, Diane?
Sure, two updates for you. Um, the Chief Galvin has received, uh, qualifications statement from the, um, Executive Office of Health and Human Services. This is in regards to the CIT, CIT T-TAC, the Jail Diversion Program that we discussed, that the chief discussed with you some time back now with, uh, the intention of Sherburne taking over that program for Middlesex County. Uh, so he's, uh, received word that Sherburne is now qualified um, to receive that grant. We're hopeful that we get the grant, uh, paperwork shortly and that that was supposed to be implemented at the start of fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, uh, which is very rapidly approaching. So I just wanted to relay that news that, uh, that, that's moving forward.
Wasn't it a ballpark, I seem to remember three employees. Is that saying right?
That's correct. Yes, the grant would fund tho- those three employees, all their benefits, all their expenses. Um, you know, their workspaces and that sort of thing. And they'd be housed out of, out of Sherburne's, uh, Police Department. So we'd receive a fair, they'd do training countywide uh, for crisis intervention, um, and how they would actually go on drive-alongs and uh, go out with officers as they respond to, to incidents and provide training and help with that response. So there's a definitely a benefit to having that, uh, hosted here within town.
Absolutely. This is a great, this is really a coup, you know, have the resource here. It's shared, but all the employees are, uh, paid for by the program and, uh, but they're housed here. So we have because previously where were they? They were like in Methuen or Lowell or somewhere. They were in Middlesex County, but.
Middlesex North.
North, Middlesex North, so.
We, we have taken advantage of their training in the past.
Probably people in the Methuen or Lowell that are unhappy, but we're happy.
Uh, we did actually the, uh, the, uh, job descriptions for those three staff. Actually went to the Personnel Board, um, recently. So we're staying ahead of that. The Personnel Board also reviewed a number of other job descriptions. And Diane and I have been working to, to update job descriptions and talk about personnel policy with, with the Personnel Board. So uh, that's been helpful. Uh, and then just one other update, uh, regarding the Charles River, uh, Health District. The consultant that was hired for that through the State Action Plan for Public Health Excellence. Um, this is sort of the regional, uh, providing regional, uh, public health services, uh, partnering with Medfield and Needham and Dover. Their consultant has finished the strategic plan. There's been a, a working group of us, uh, including Daryl and myself from Sherburne, um, that have been meeting, um, to help with, uh, putting together the strategic plan and how to implement, uh, the Health District. Um, the consultant has completed and finalized their, their work product and has presented that strategic, strategic plan, which I'm happy to forward on to the, the board if you're interested. Um, and are now, uh, working to get the MOUs in place between the member communities. Um, and looking forward to, um, you know, implementing in the coming year. You know, one of the big benefits for the town of Sherburne is that this grant will be funding, um, essentially a, a part-time, a shared public health nurse with the town of Dover. Um, so, um, Sherburne will, will, uh, basically get a halftime of a public health nurse to, to provide services for residents. Uh, among other things as well. And hopefully this, uh, serves as a model for other regionalization of, of different services.
I, I like the other aspect too, which is the sort of the benchmarking component, where we're actually learning some lessons learned from each of those towns, even what they already do, you know, that we sort of get just exposure to, uh, the way different towns handle things. So. Great. All right. Diane, did you have anything you wanted to add? You gotta unmute yourself.
Nope, no, I think Jeremy, Jeremy has it all covered.
All right.
Thank you.
Anybody want to stay for another half hour or make a motion? You got two choices.
Well, before, I'll make the motion, but before I do that, let me just wish everybody a happy Fourth of Joy.
Yeah, absolutely. Are you going to Nantucket for the four?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want to say on camera.
Oh, all right. That's good. You know, I, when I was, uh, working for Bud Plute, I, I was, uh, working in the fireworks truck at Jetties Beach in Nantucket many years ago. many years ago.
Well, that's why there was spectacular fireworks.
No, it was very dangerous. I was scared to death. They had a guy, they're they're they didn't use electronic ignition, and they had a guy with a cigar, and they would run over and light these giant, they looked like bombs. It was uh they had an Italian company from Long Island, I think, and he just run to these different pipes with a cigar and light these fuses, and I would be handing him all these giant bombs. I said, I don't like this. It's a million years ago, but Bud Bud Plute was this uh superintendent.
Was that a motion?
He all made the motion to uh close the meeting. Do I have a second, Marion? You're seconding, so is Eric?
I just want to comment that John should close his computer when he's not uh in front of it, but yes, I I.
All right.
Say hi to Pam.
Steven?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Thank you, guys, and uh I ditto the uh enthusiastic joy forth wishes.
Night, everybody.
Night.
Ciao.